Good evening. It is August 13th, 2013. I'm Sue Crane. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is good to be here. It's the second Tuesday of the month, and traditionally, this is the town business meeting, and we read the supervisor's report for the previous month. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The opening balance was $3,695,606. We received $120,384. We dispersed $200,478, leaving a balance of $3,615,512. And that's all rounded to the nearest decimal. There are pennies involved. Deb has prepared this for us, and I believe in the back, the last three pages, you'll see some budget adjustments. In the case of the A Fund, total increase in revenues was $3,487. The detail is there. We're reducing appropriations by $444, so that the total increase in appropriations is $3,931. In the B Fund, we are increasing revenues in the amount of $11,950. We will reduce appropriations $1,873, which means there's an increase in appropriations And finally, in the Highway DB Fund, in terms of increasing revenues, we will increase revenues in the amount of $997. There are zero reductions in appropriations, so the total increase in appropriations is You might wish to note that on the first page are the reserve balances in Parklands. And I was looking for, maybe somebody can help me find it, the PBR.
Near the bottom.
And that's near the bottom. Here it is. We have, in the Community Preservation Transfer Tax Fund, $291,758 as of July 31st. The above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books at the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on July 31st. And I would ask for an approval.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. There's a Town Clerk's Report tonight.
Tonight is August 13th, 2013. This is Town Clerk Monthly Report, July 1 through July 31st, 2013. Total local shares remitted to Supervisor as Town Revenue, $2,312.77. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the spade and muter program, $78. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $225. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $155.88, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,771.65. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook, during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just have two little brief announcements. One, as of this past Monday, August 12th, the sporting licenses have gone on sale, and my window has been very, very busy in the morning with -- we always have one gentleman that's waiting a half hour for us on Monday, every Monday morning. So he likes to be the first one here. And also, I want to remind residents that a really terrific and fun event is coming up, September 21st. That's Hardscrabble Day, and we have good music, good food, good friends, and we end with a parade at 4:00, and then the music afterwards. Parade information is actually going out in the mail tomorrow, and if anybody's interested in joining, just contact me, and we'd love to have you in the parade. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
In terms of announcements, I just wanted to draw to the Board's attention and anyone else who is interested in the next Town Board meeting. It typically would be on September 10th, the Tuesday, but that is primary day, and so we are engaged here at this site with elections. So we will need to reschedule that Town Board meeting. And Sue and I discussed the calendar earlier, and it looks to me, if the Board can agree, that Thursday is an alternate meeting date, Thursday, the 5th of September. This room is free and available that day, and if anyone needs to be absent, it's understandable as long as we have a quorum. Jim, are you available that day?
Yeah, I might be a little late, because I often get out, you know, by 7:30.
Okay.
I work in the bud, Thursday the 5th, that is, and there's no court.
Thursday the 5th. There is no court. That's rescheduled also.
Yep.
I don't think I can make that soon.
That's okay. That's okay. That's understandable. And Harry, are you free?
I'm fine.
Okay. And Bill's good, and as far as I know, I am as well, so we'll have a quorum. So let's schedule that, Thursday, September 5th, at 7:30, as the change in the first meeting of the month in September, from the 10th to the 5th. And we will notify anybody who is planning to attend that meeting on September 10th, that it has been moved forward five days. And I think that'll work out. It's far enough away from Labor Day that it shouldn't be a problem. It's tough to figure out. September's a busy month with school starting, but let's try this, and Sue will notice it, and hopefully, people will be able to attend if need be.
Sue, why aren't we talking? Are we foregoing the Wednesday meeting, the end of this month?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Yes, we are. We are. It has been, I think it's been formally noticed that it was canceled, right? And I don't know that there's any reason to hold it. If something should come up, it will be a special meeting, but so far as we know, the meeting, typical fourth Wednesday of the month, in July and August, have been canceled. Okay. So, any other announcements? Bill, do you have anything?
No.
Nor do I.
Okay. Brenda?
Nope.
Jim?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So, public comment. Is there any? Okay. I have one public comment that I was asked to make on behalf of the Lawson family, and this is more for the Board's attention, that coming to us by way of Teresa Burke, the Highway Superintendent, will be a letter from June Lawson. And if you'll recall, months ago, their house on East Curly Corners Road was literally smashed into by a car, a car ended up in their living room kind of thing. And she is very, very concerned about, and her husband and family and neighbors, the 55 mile an hour limit, speed limit, on East Curly Corners Road, in particular because there are major vehicles traveling that road at 55, and those are dump trucks from the delivery and pickup of Red Wing gravel. And I'm sure you all know that when a heavy vehicle is going at a speed, the velocity is, the speed times weight, and it's harder for them to stop. And she said she's seen some near misses, and she's, I suggested that she write a letter to Teresa Burke, who's on vacation this week, citing her concerns and copying ours, and I'll make sure you get a copy of it, requesting Teresa to petition the county on our behalf to reduce that speed limit. And I think when Teresa gets back from vacation, she'll be able to turn her attention to it. They suffered a huge amount of damage to their house, and fortunately, no one was badly hurt, although her husband suffered some injury. But she cited since then, you know, it just seems like something should be done, and since it is a county road, we're going to have to go to County DPW with the request. We can't just do it out of hand. So I thought I would let you know that that's going to be in the works shortly, and we'll see what we can get from the county in terms of speed reduction on East Curly Corners Road. And that's all I have. So, if there are no other public comments, we can move forward with the agenda items. They are fairly succinct, I think, tonight, the first being a resolution to approve the, authorize the master plan for the Rec Park Extension. And Christine, you prepared this for us very kindly before you went on vacation. I thank you for that. And I wanted to say that, as you all know, we've had some back and forth with negotiations for the layout for this recreation park extension plan. And today, I had a discussion with the engineers from Weston and Sampson, and we agreed to resolve what we owe them for the additional time and work that they have put in, and we have agreed, they have agreed to a reduction, a slight reduction in the billing for the extension. And they have agreed to have their CAD operator come in from the field and meet with Mike Nowicki, who is the biologist, and lay out the mitigation plan for the Rec Park wetlands, which is the final piece that we need for the permitting from Army Corps of Engineers. And so I think this is going to bring closure very quickly, within the week or so, and we may have a resolution next time about payment for that change in the contract. It's not a huge amount of money, and there is money there for it, and we feel it's really important that we move forward and get this resolved. So it looks like that's where we are. So I offer this resolution for your consideration. Chris, do you want to talk about it a little bit, or is...
Sure. So this resolution references the master plan documents that we reviewed, gosh, more than a month ago.
Yes.
And we had a public hearing, went to the Seeker, and approved the Seeker on this, and approved the exemption from the zoning requirements. So you're now in a position to consider those plan elements. And this is the plan, the same plan that was presented at that time. It includes the water and sewer, the soccer and baseball field, particular areas, pedestrian trail, gravel drive, and bathroom snack bar pavilion. And one of the things that the resolution indicates is that it approves the master plan, and then it specifies that contracts can be let from time to time in accordance with your procurement requirements and available budgeted funds. So the idea is that the development of this would be subject to a further presentation to this board and approval by this board of a phasing plan for the allocation of funds, from appropriate budgeted funds, whether that's grants or budgeted monies or whatever source accounts available. And that it particularly indicates that any required wetlands remediation is to be completed as part of the first phase, because that's one of the things that would be important, is to start with that part of the process in your phasing. And the Recreation Commission then is asked to develop the proposed phasing plan in consultation with the engineer, and, you know, that's really the substance of the resolution.
So, Jim, will you read the "Now therefore be it resolved"?
Um, certainly. "Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows: The Town Board hereby approves the master plan for the proposed recreation park extension. Contracts for improvements may be let from time to time in accordance with and subject to the town's adopted purchasing policy and available budgeted funds, provided that siting laws shall be subject to approval of a phasing plan by the Town Board, and any required wetlands remediation shall be completed as part of the first phase. The Recreation Commission will develop a proposed phasing plan in consultation with the engineer assigned from time to time by the Town Board. The officers, employees, and agents of the town are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things as may be necessary or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or agent acting desirable and proper to affect the purposes of the foregoing resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately."
Thank you. So I move the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Do we have to number this, you know, just for record keeping?
Sue will number this.
Oh, yeah. They're all numbered, yeah.
It'll be numbered after tonight, right?
Yes.
The second is a resolution that has been provided to us by Senator Terry Gibson's office regarding unfunded mandates, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later as it affects our budgeting process, but his office provided the resolution that you have before you. And Bill, if you would read this resolution, we can then maybe discuss it.
Well, the resolution states that whereas unfunded mandates are program requirements imposed on local governments with little or no financial assistance to implement these requirements, and whereas local governments face a choice between increasing local taxes or cutting important services in order to fund these programs, and whereas Senator Terry Gibson's proposed constitutional ban, which is Senate Bill 5126, on new unfunded mandates will allow local governments to decide whether they will implement a mandate within their jurisdiction, and whereas this legislation will require that states fund any new mandate which will cost a municipality or school district $10,000 or more to implement, and whereas a passage of this prohibition on unfunded mandates will end the flow of unreasonable requirements from the state to our town, thereby allowing legislators to begin the next step of cutting back on existing mandates, that therefore be it resolved that this Town of Red Hook Board endorses Senate Bill 5126 and urges the Senate to take up this bill for debate and to pass it into law.
Thank you. We will be talking about the 2014 budget in a little bit, but I don't think we need to look forward to realize the impact that we, as a small municipality, suffer when we're told from New York State or federal government, or anywhere else for that matter, county or otherwise, that we are faced with new expenses that we were not prepared to pay or could plan for. So I looked at this as a step in the right direction, that it was telling New York State legislators and governor that our town joins with other towns in saying it's up to us about these mandates, and that we get a chance to have a say, that we reject them, or, okay, we think they're reasonable, but we have a say about whether or not we accept them. And I liked it, and I hope you'll all react to it, because I think we all have to take a stand in this. It's just happening more and more frequently from every direction, and from my point of view, it leaves us floundering to have charges come to us that we have no control over and no hope for reimbursement for. Jim, do you have any comments?
No, I feel very strongly the same way, and not that we even like raising taxes, but, you know, they impose a 2% cap on us as well, and then so, you know, and they don't really pay much attention to that when they do come down with these mandates, so I think this is actually long overdue.
Okay. Brenda?
No, I support it. I think it makes sense, and I think we should note that it doesn't apply for expenditures that are less than $10,000 or for laws that are already in effect.
Mm-hmm. Right. Harry?
Yeah, I feel the same way, that we have these people coming out on us from on high, imposing actions that we must take often that are expensive without considering the cost to the taxpayers here. We have a cap on our tax increases that is less than the rate of inflation, and we're expected to keep up with maintaining the roads and providing a community and facilities within the community for the needs of the day-to-day use of the people. There seems to be a big blind spot in Albany, not to speak of Washington.
Thank you, Harry. Bill?
I believe it's reasonable and necessary.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The third resolution is a resolution authorizing the solicitation of public bids for the demolition disposal of the former highway garage. I think this one is pretty straightforward. We are all in agreement that we wish to move forward with this project, and so I will read the resolution. Whereas at the request of the town, Crawford and Associates Engineering PC has prepared bid specifications for the construction of the demolition of the former highway garage in the Town of Red Hook, the project, contract number 361612, as more specifically shown in the draft plans on file with the Town Clerk. And whereas the Supervisor of the Town of Red Hook has requested that the town proceed with advertising for requests for bids for the proposed demolition and disposal of the former highway garage located along Route 9 in the Town of Red Hook in accordance with the specifications on file with the Town Clerk. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize and direct solicitation of bids for the project in accordance with the specifications on file, with bids to be received until 3:00 PM on September 4, 2013, at such later time and date as determined by the Supervisor upon consultation with the Town Engineer, provided that such publication shall appear not less than five days prior to the date set for the bid opening. And I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have, next in your folder, a report from Ted Kutsay, who went out for quotes from three companies for a quotation to relocate the petroleum tank alarms for the Highway Department. And I'll simply read his memo. Tank alarm relocation, I have received two quotes out of the three companies requested. American Petroleum and Construction Company of Walden, New York submitted the low quotation of $9,250 for tank alarm relocation. This has to be accomplished before the demolition of the Quonset Garage building can be done. That company, APECCO, is a fully insured and certified full-service environmental and construction company specializing in this type of work. The town used American Petroleum to install the present tanks and alarm system originally, and they performed satisfactory work. He would like to issue a PO to American Petroleum and Construction Company for this project, and have reviewed the request for quotes and quotations with Teresa Burke, Highway Superintendent, and she approves. And so I would like to make a motion that we authorize Ted to move forward.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Well, the fifth item on the agenda, there are two pieces that I'd like you to consider. One is the budget calendar. I know it seems like we just did this, but we are back at it, doing it again. The budget calendar calls for the Budget Officer to provide to the heads of the administrative departments prescribed forms no later than September 1st. And I believe Rose is working on that now, and so we are on target. And then we are expecting submission of estimates to Budget Officer on or before the 20th of September, and the filing by the Supervisor and Budget Officer must be no later than September 30th. So we have a month, more than a month, and Rose and I met yesterday. We're talking about the realities of the budget, and that she is already prepared, looking ahead, and I thank you for all that you're doing with your expertise. I know that we are in good hands with you as a Budget Officer. Thank you, Rose. And the Budget Departments understand that you have a tough job. It's to your credit that you can tell them the bad news, and they smile. I don't know quite how you do that, but you manage, and I thank you for that. So by September 30th, we will have to the Town Clerk, the Supervisor's budget for filing. And the second piece to this, it has to do with this beloved tax cap. And you see the piece that we cut out of the Kipsey Journal, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. I did wake up to this yesterday morning with great thrill. And the Kipsey Journal carried the report, "Tax Cap Falls to 1.66 in 2014." So it appears that last year, we were dealing with a 2% cap, no more than 2% increase in budget. This year, it's going to be no more than 1.66%. It's worse than it was last year. And quite frankly, with a threshold like this, I don't think that there's any hope that we can face the budget ahead without override. So I think the Board needs to be prepared to do that, or at least discuss it very soon. And I wonder to myself, as I see this, and know the effect it has on the Town of Red Hook, and knowing that we have done everything we can think to do to cut administrative costs, to be responsible for our budgeting process year after year, I just can't imagine what townships and villages are to do, and what the state is thinking we can do without dismantling. townships and villages are to do, and what the state is thinking we can do without dismantling the very system that serves our residents best. The local people are the ones that are involved in volunteering by the hundreds to help us get work done in the community, and we're affected at that at a very low price, a low cost to the taxpayers. And how they think they can continue to push down and push down and expect us to cut and cut and cut without devastating impacts, I have no idea. And I, I'd like to get some reaction from board members. Jim, would you weigh in on this?
Yes, to be honest with you, Sue, we don't like the override, but I, I don't see how we cannot do this year, particularly as we have to start making payments on our highway garage construction, on the bond payments and so on. And we've basically at this point cut all departments to the point that there really isn't much more to eliminate. And then by the time we have to add on the, the loan payment, you know, the principal and interest, and, and the other expenses, I don't see how we can, it'd be very difficult to stay below the, the 1.66 for next year. That's for sure without
Right.
An override. Obviously, we will, with due diligence, scrutinize your budget when you get it to us, but (laugh).
I know. But we'll do whatever we can, but I, I just, again, I, I just, I don't know how it's possible for municipalities to deliver their services. Brenda?
Well, I think we were pretty lean last year in the budget, and I know we, we almost exceeded the 2%, and then had a little glitch that I think maybe we actually did, so I can't imagine that we would be able to keep it under 1.66, but we'll try.
Thank you. Harry?
Well, I think what I said before, just, this is in spades, it's an additional, it, we can't continue to provide what the town, the people of the town require in day-to-day living, which we, we're the source of that. We plow, we plow the roads, we allow people, the kids to get to school by plowing the roads, and we're not in charge of how much snow falls, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I could, I could go on and on. And, and it, it all costs money, and it has to be done. And we have to budget accordingly. And it's time for, the power's on high, and I tell them rather frequently when I see them, that they need to come up with a new fiscal strategy statewide, statewide. There is a better strategy within New York City that I've told many people about very often, and New York City doesn't have the stress as we have because they have a different deal with the state than we have. And I, it has to be fixed, and it has to be fixed from the top down.
Thank you, Harry. Well?
Well, as a tool, the, the override has been made available to us, and then where it's reasonable and it's necessary, I don't think we should hesitate to use it if we have.
Thank you.
And what Brenda said, it reminded me that at budget time last year, we all, we, our budget was considerably lower than the prior year, but we were still bumping up against the 2% just because of loss of revenue. Now, if the economy turns around and our revenue picks up, you know, that will be really only saving grace because it just isn't any more fat to cut.
Right. Well, we do what we can, and the, the good news is that we're experienced at budget preparation and consideration, and we work together well, and I think that the people of the town know that we'll do the best we can to give them whatever tax relief is possible. In terms of board reports, does anyone have a planning board report?
No, there, there isn't on this panel.
Okay. And how about zoning board?
There's a zoning board meeting tomorrow night, and they have two appeal reviews scheduled tomorrow evening.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And department reports, and we'll take these right from the top. Animal Control, do you have one? Brenda?
No, I don't.
Okay. We have an assessor's report, which I will read to you. The 2013 final roll has been filed and published on July 1, 2013 pursuant to New York State Real Property Tax Law. We have updated some of the information on the website to link to the roll as published on Dutchess County website. Number two, to date, we have received notification of two certiori and two small claims assessment review processes with respect to the 2013 role, assessment role. We have, number three, we have thus far documented and reviewed 346 properties and are attempting to complete data collection by the end of September. Number four, in addition to commercial properties, I am also reviewing sales information and making appropriate changes. These reviews are essential for the upcoming valuation process. And number five, continue working on the reappraisal process for the year 2014 roll. I know that my staff and I remain committed to continued fair assessment practices, and I look forward to continued service to the citizens of this great community. Respectfully, Scott Hobson, Assessor. And Attorney, how was your vacation? Did you enjoy yourself? You look very rested, and we're very happy for you.
We worked some more.
That's great, and you, you deserve it, well deserved. Rose, do you have a budget officer's report?
Um, just to reiterate, after you said, I've been working on the, on the budget, really starting in earnest now, and also finalizing the five-year capital debt and the five-year expansion plan. So those are all in progress, and they'll be moving along this, the end of this month more, more quickly.
Thank you, Rose. There is a building inspector's report. Bill, can you take care of that?
Uh, yeah, the building inspector, they had 10, a total of 10 complaints that were propagated involving zoning and maintenance of properties. They had a total of 59 inspections from July 8 to August 13, 2013, and they provided the town board with a detailed report on those inspections. There were a total of 19 certificates prepared by the, by the building department, again for that same period. And again, we have a detailed list of each of those. And as far as the permits go, there were told 21 that were applied for involving alterations and renovations and such things as that that were investigated by the building department. Their fees collected for this period, July 8 to August 13, 2013, were $1,235. There were 13 searches performed, so the total taken in by the building department during that period was $2,535. And that's their report.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. I want you to know that the building inspector, this will, this will be on Panda next Monday. The building inspector will be on vacation next week, starting Monday for a week, so anyone looking for permits will have to wait a week. Well deserved.
Will Bob be here?
Bob will be here in the afternoon, I believe.
Monday afternoon.
Mondays and Wednesdays?
Uh, Monday afternoon and Thursday morning.
Monday afternoon and Thursday morning. Good. Okay, so Thursday morning would be the one that anyone watching on Panda would know. Okay, thank you. Now Brenda, would you like to talk a little bit about the grant applications?
Um, sure. On the, well, the Trails Committee has been working really hard, and with Rich Shafo taking the lead, he managed to get in an application to the consolidated funding application process one day early, which is kind of unheard of. And that application was for funds to enhance the Tully Bayes Trail that goes from Kid Lane to the Fisher Center, and also to build the Aspen Wall Access Trail at the new rec park. And I, let's see, the total requested, I think was around, around 10, but the town did not have to fund any, we were going to match our requirement within kind services that Bard College was providing for the Tivoli Trail. And then some of us are currently working on another application for the transportation enhancement program to build a sidewalk on the east side of South Broadway going south from Town Hall, and that application is due Friday. And we don't have a total estimate yet of cost.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the work on that. Teresa is on vacation, so we'll pass on the highway department report, except to say that they are out, out and repaving. And I spoke with Rick this afternoon, and I'll see if I can remember the roads. He said that the amount of paving that was to have been done on Norton Road is complete. I think it's a little over half of Norton Road is completed, and we went out by
Oriole Mills.
Oriole Mills, thank you. Oriole Mills is completed, and then they had some small paving to be done in and around. There were a couple of other small parcels that had to be done, and you'll notice that the highway has taken care of that irregularity out here in front of the old highway garage where there were tanks buried, or a tank buried. So that's paved over. So they've been busy, and I guess, in spite of the weather, they're on schedule, just I can tell. Is that right? Harry, you probably know more than I do about it.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're making great progress.
Okay.
And have been, have had enough flexibility to pick up unplanned needs.
Great. Okay, Police Department. I have a Red Hook Police Department report for the month of July, and there were a total incidents for the month of July of 58. There were six arrests, and in the town of Red Hook, total tickets issued in the amount of 20. And the detail of these various incidents you will see before you. I do not have yet the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department July report, but I, I certainly will have it for the next meeting. The purchasing report, is there one? Harry, or did we not? I think the comments from Ted were clear from before, and I think this is a little early for
Yeah. And
Yeah, we're, we're asking people to do this early this month, and so some, some of them are
Actually, we've, we've incidentally covered, covered what he's done largely related to the Quonset.
Right. Jim, the Town Water District report is in front of us?
Yep, everything's really going smoothly. We actually, the normal is 80,000 gallons per day, and we actually pumped 80.6 thousand gallons today on the average this past June. The wells are holding their own fine. In fact, both of them have, one has three feet, one has two feet water higher than normal. Filpers are working fine, they, they have some repair work to do on the storage tank fence after they removed the poison ivy because there's a little bit of vandalism there. Someone's spray painted three faces on the tank, so they're gonna repair the, the broken barbed wire on the fence after they cleared, apparently there's a lot of poison ivy there, they're gonna clear that off. And they, they have enough meters, they're still working on meter replacements, and you know, certain, at some point, they're gonna have to go to the wireless remote type, but they're covered fine at this, at this time. And they've, and they've been cleaning the fences around the pump house.
Mm-hmm.
And that's pretty much it, other than the usual that they have.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Committee reports, and there is one solid citizen here, we're gonna start with her because bless her heart, she came out on this
Miss Conchis.
Lovely night. Thank you for coming, Nancy Guske. On behalf of the Tree Committee, I'm presuming?
It's lovely.
(laugh)
Um, yeah, well, we're wrapping up our two-year, you know, urban forestry grant. We planted 32 trees. Brenda did the street and road inventory, and Integral is finishing up the inventory of the park, and nearly finished with that. So the next step will be for me to gather all of that and turn it in. Brenda and I went to the annual relief conference, it was, it was called Rust to Green. It was at Lutaca Rome SUNY IT. On July 18th and the 19th, we attended sessions about returning distressed real estate to parks and green space to spur economic development. Matthew Driscoll and Kevin Caravati, who have extensive experience in these areas, did the presentation, they were great. Matthew Driscoll, tenure as mayor of the city of Syracuse, was distinguished by his environmental and sustainability initiatives. His action plan was so effective that they were, they earned the title of the Emerald City, and the, they had recognition in popular science magazines, so one of the nation's greenest cities.
And which city was that? I'm sorry.
Syracuse.
In Syracuse?
Yeah. And so it was, you know, these conferences are great because you get to see the experts and listen to the experts, and really, you're quite intimate because, you know, it's 150 people, and you really get to know them and share questions. The networking is wonderful, you almost become like a family. So we had a wonderful time, and I always learn something. We continue to work on the forestry management plan, which I hope to complete this fall. I didn't know it was going to be my life's work, but it's, I think we're getting there. So that, that, that should be done. Michelle Gregg was very gracious and gave me a couple hours of her time to kind of look over it and, and help me kind of get some thoughts together, so I really do appreciate that. Our next meeting is August 19th, and we'll be talking about our fall planting and hardscrabble day, what we're gonna do for hardscrabble day. We are planting a tree, a commemorative tree for George Hildebrandt, over by the office in that little lawn area.
Nice.
We talked, we talked about that, and we, we are thinking about planting a crab apple tree called Snowdrift. We thought that would be kind of appropriate.
(laugh)
So we are a little sad about our dog went out here.
It's coming back from the bottom though, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, but I think, I think we may have to make, maybe consider, I remember you saying, "Let's have something, shall we?" Well, it's, I've not quite made that, so we're gonna try to do something about that. We may have to replace it, so I, we're gonna wait and see, but
Okay.
I don't know, what do you think, Brenda?
Yeah, I haven't looked at it closely lately.
Yeah.
It comes back to the bottom of us, it could be grafted, and it could be this small root.
Yeah, I feel bad about it. So, but that's where we're at.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you so much, Nancy. Okay, from the top, no, maybe CAC? Do you have any?
Tomorrow, so
Tomorrow. So we're just, yeah, we're, we're off cycle, right?
Next month.
Okay, great, great. So Bill, do you have anything for Ag and Open Space?
No, the Ag and Open Space Committee has not met actually this summer, June or July, and I'm not so sure whether they're gonna meet during, right after Fair Week, but anyway, I'm sure they'll meet as soon as they can get a quorum, and when the farmers, you know, the busiest time of their season right now.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing to report yet from the Ag and Open Space Committee.
Okay, thank you. The Community Preservation Farm Land Protection Committee will be meeting, I don't have the date, but they, they are going to be considering the two proposals that will be before us for setting a public hearing at our next meeting, and that is the Kosuki Farm and the, and the And that is, the Kusuki Farm and the Close Farm have agreed to sell development rights, and so the next time we meet, on the 5th of September, we will be setting public hearings for those two. And at the meeting, when we actually have the public hearing, we will have the report from the Community Preservation Committee to consider at the same time. So Conservation Advisory Committee is on hold till they meet again. Design Review Hamlet, I don't know. Does anyone have any reports?
No, and I don't think they're any active.
Right. And Disaster Preparedness, I'm sure that they are going to have booklets, a table at Hardscrabble Day, and they'll be handing out those disaster booklets that they do so well, and people appreciate so much, that Dick Franklin prepared. And that's about, I know they're meeting with the school coming up. The school is starting again, its disaster preparedness plan, and our members are involved in that monthly meeting with officials from around the area, so they will be busy come September. Economic Development Committee, anybody got a report on that?
I don't have a report. I can go to their meetings. They didn't, they skipped a couple of meetings over the summer.
Right.
But they have met again, and they are moving forward, and we will have a report from them of the questionnaires they sent out, rather successfully to a number of the businesses in town.
Good, that's great. Bill, the Intermunicipal Task Force?
Well, the Intermunicipal Task Force, weekly meetings during June and July, continue to consider the proposed changes in zoning regarding what we call the traditional neighborhood districts in our Centers of Green Space Plan, the detail of developments proposed in the Town of Red Hook, having to do with the configuration of roads within proposed districts, including what we call the Hoffman TND project. So that involves, you know, review of matters such as the width of roads and the configuration of them, parking lanes, curbs, right-ofways, bumpouts, and stuff like that. So that's a work still in progress, and mostly the Town of Red Hook is waiting, you know, for the detail by the developers, what they propose to do, and then the town would have to react to that and see how it fits in the proposed zoning. The existing zoning, and what we might do as far as tweaking the existing zoning. And also continue to review the matter of scenic roads and historic preservation. There are drafts of zoning changes on these subjects, which only recently, I think as it was reported by the supervisor's office, the task force received a $7,500 state grant to fund it. So we're right now in the process of working and meeting between the planner and the town attorney to figure out what our next steps are in that direction, but at least we have some funding now to continue that process. And in that connection, where the town has been looking at scenic roads and historic preservation, since the Elmendorf Society has kind of merged with the Egbert Benson Society, we have, we think in the Town of Red Hook now a wonderful, what would you call it? It's not an agency, but it's a wonderful group, which is, actually, I think they call themselves the--
Historic Society.
The Elmendorf slash Egbert Benson Historical Society. But the combination has resulted in a lot of really intelligent and thoughtful people who we've asked to look at the proposed list of what constitutes historic, you know, units, homes, areas that the Town of Red Hook views, that generally the town might want to consider preserving through some means of a proposed zoning for the town board to consider. So that's an ongoing process.
Great. Yeah, there's some really enthusiastic and super intelligent people involved in that group, and that's wonderful to engage them in that effort. Thank you, Bill. I don't have a PANDA report unless someone else does. Rec Mission, does anyone? Harry, I guess that's up to you.
Well, as a lengthy report here, met last night.
Yes.
It's been a rather successful summer. The programs that have not wound down in the last matter of days are about to wind down, the summer programs. There seems to be a growing schedule of full programs, some related to football and whatever. It's difficult to keep track on, but the programs that we've had over the summer were very successful, as I said, and the ongoing maintenance and maintenance requirements of the rec park are continuing. There's been an awful lot of work done on it this summer. The walking track was repaired, and the list of projects goes on and on and on. It's kind of like taking care of your lawn. No sooner is mowed than it needs to be mowed again. And we have a great staff there doing great work. We should all thank them.
Thank you, Harry.
If I could make a note, I think in that report, you know, what this town should really take notice of is, of all the summer programs, which I think conclude tomorrow, the last summer program, but for all of these programs, all summer, there have been, so far, no reported accidents or incidents. And I think that's a credit to the program people, the people who run the Rec Mission.
Yeah, most of them, many of them are experienced with this program for many years, and it's a great comfort to know that we've got professional people who have been carrying it forward year after year, and I'm sure it's a great comfort to the parents who use the program and their children who attend the programs. I know that we are going to be addressing the need for equipment to continue maintaining the park, and that, again, is another issue that requires money. And I think that because we are able to keep kids happily engaged during the summer, they have a better educational experience through the summer, and certainly a better social experience during the summer. And it's hard to put a number on the value of that. So as we talk about the budget and the needs of the Recreation Department and the park systems in general, I know that we will keep in mind the value of what we offer the citizens and the children of our town. Anything from St. Margaret's Committee? Anyone? Jim, I guess that's yours.
No, I was not at the last meeting, because they have it during the day. I got the minutes, it was just a routine, there wasn't anything special. I neglected to bring the copy of the minutes they provided me with the season.
Okay, thank you. And Senior Services Committee, Brenda?
No, they did not meet.
Okay. And Trails Committee, I think that's the, the grant has been largely that--
Yeah, it's been taking up the time, and we also have a phone call that there's, we have another grant coming in September from the Greenway Program for Trails, and there's mention of somebody, some group locally that may be applying for that on our behalf, so I hope to be able to announce that in the press.
Well, that's exciting. Thank you. Great. And finally, the Zoning Review Committee, I don't believe has met, so there's nothing to report in that regard. I have forwarded to you, I believe, all of the correspondence, or it's in a folder here for your consideration. I would like to just make a couple of comments about one piece of correspondence. I won't discuss from whom it came, but just to say that I'm sure that there are people in this, this is in regard to the demolition of the old highway garage, and I'm sure there are people in Red Hook who are questioning the wisdom of demolishing the highway garage at a time when we don't have enough funding to do some of the things that we want to do, or to be comfortable doing some of the things we want to do. But I was able to construct a letter to a person who wrote today about the wisdom of taking that highway garage down, and I thought it would be wise to just go on air about it, to say that this board has followed many boards, considering a new highway garage for at least 15, maybe 20 years of how to do it, where to do it, how large to build it. And we have now a highway garage that includes the facility that provides safe and adequate place to work for not only Town of Red Hook Highway Department employees, but also the Village of Red Hook Highway Department employees. And we believe that it was a responsible and a good and satisfying plan that we came up with, and I believe that the employees are very happy with the new facility, and I believe those people who have taken the time to visit that new facility are very proud of what we have done. At the same time, we never said that we would keep the old highway department, the old highway garage. We always looked at this entire campus here that the town owns as an entity that needs planning, and that perhaps we could enhance the town's vision of what we offer the local residents by providing maybe some park space here, maybe some, certainly some better parking. This room is used regularly by groups, week in and week out, and the parking has gotten to be really not just problematic, but dangerous, and we need that space. So to say that it's not necessary to take down that highway garage, I would like to have a conversation with anyone who thinks that, because it's very difficult to continue the way we are with that big building taking up much-needed parking space. So I think the plan is a good one. I think the town board agrees that we have done our best to come up with a responsible plan that will meet the community's needs and make people safe when they come in here to park safely and come in and out of the building safely, to use the building well. And so I just wanted to say that anyone who has any questions about the wisdom of that, I'd be happy to talk with them about it. They can call my office, and we can talk about it. Anybody got any comments about that?
Well, I thought you did an awful lot of work to answer that inquiry.
I also wondered whether you'd want to, you know, make public your letter through the Observer or some other, you know, local thing, because it does answer a lot of--
I could do that, I suppose.
I think you did a great job in answering that.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know if they publish those or not.
Probably do like a letter to the editor or something like that.
Yeah, it could be a letter to the editor. I might do that, yeah. Because I do think that, you know, there are questions about why are we doing this now? Why can't it just sit there? Why can't, you know, and really, people don't realize the amount of traffic that comes and goes here, and how dangerous it is for people trying to get in here and do business and leave in a safe way. And I just think, a year from now, we are going to be so happy with a good parking lot that's appropriately marked for parking and safe for people to come and go. So I'll think about that, Bill. Thank you. Maybe I will, maybe I will. I might delete some references to names.
Yeah, I mean, edit it.
Okay, yeah, that's a thought. Okay. All right, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it is just a little after 8:30, and ladies and gentlemen, we are finished for the night.
That's amazing.
Is there any further public comment?
I stopped.
Hearing none. Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
I remember Dick Franklin came to you several months ago and mentioned that he had carved a piece for the Empire State Carousel on Cooperstown. So there's a story on that and pictures in the next issue of the Observer coming out this Wednesday. So I know he wanted to come and bring you pictures, I think, and maybe he still will, but just in case he doesn't--
Oh, that's great. Yes, Dick Franklin did contact me to say to watch for the Observer with the carving and Red Hook's official location on that carousel in New York State Museum in Cooperstown. So we'll look forward to that. Thank you. Thanks very much for remembering that. Okay, has anyone anything else?
No.
Hearing none? Is there a motion?
So move adjourned.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.